Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. Today is Thursday, June 20th, 2024, and this meeting is being broadcast or recorded by Milford TV. Copies can be obtained at the request of this board and through the central office. So to start, we're going to do some recognition of some of our teachers who are retiring this year. Does anyone come hang out? Couple minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
So I'm gonna have each of you introduce yourselves first, and then I've got a couple things to say.
I am Paula.
Then we'll open up to the committee.
I am Paula Mulliver, and I was a kindergarten teacher at Memorial.
I am Jennifer Walsh. I was the transition vocation coordinator here at Milford High.
Good evening. Bethany Tracy, I am the school psychologist, or was, at Milford High School.
All right, so I'm gonna, if it's okay, Matt?
Yeah, please.
Just jump in.
Yeah.
So Paula's been a kindergarten teacher at MES for 38 years, is that right?
Thirty-eight.
She started when she was seven. She was very precocious. She is, um, she's dedicated and caring educator who always made our youngest students feel welcome and that they could accomplish absolutely anything in a classroom. Whenever I visited her, it was warm, active, and always leveraged the enthusiasm and curiosity of her students. Additionally, Paula supported our new teachers through her work as a mentor coordinator and worked tirelessly with the school administration to ensure that Memorial had a positive school climate. I want to congratulate her on a long and well-deserved retirement, and I will personally miss you, Paula. We had a lot of conversations over the years.
You did.
I appreciated that. Do you want me to just go one, and then you guys make comments?
Yeah, sure, sure.
All right.
Hey, Neil, go ahead.
So thank you very much for all your service to the community. Uh, we had the opportunity to work together during the recent teacher negotiation contract, so, um, I appreciated that. I, I sat next to you a few times during those meetings, um, and I appreciated some of the conversation that we had just from the back and forth of what was going on and trying to negotiate the current teacher contract. So that was a lot of our, our interaction, obviously. Uh, my stu-, my children went to work side, so unfortunately, they didn't have you as a teacher, but, uh, from outside of the classroom, we got to interact with the, on the contract, so I appreciated that involvement. So, thank you, and again, thank you for your service, and enjoy your time.
Oh, I love. There'll be no seven for me.
We'll see.
That's a strong no.
Just to keep it short, uh, first time meeting you, but, um, thank you for all that you've done. Um, I'm a little sad, I mean, my daughter, she won't get to have your experience of your, of your teaching, but, um, yeah, thank you for all of your service and have so much fun in your retirement.
Thank you for your time.
I'm just gonna echo what everybody else said. I mean, 38 years is a very long time to do a very challenging job at a very challenging age, and my, my kids are just now entering school for the most part, so, um, I haven't had the experience of, of many working with you outside of the negotiations, of course, and, and as smoothly as that went, um, I can say that you've done a lot for this community, so thank you very much.
I loved it all.
All right, we'll move on to Jen Walsh.
Please.
So, uh, Ms. Walsh has been a tireless advocate for our students, um, particularly those with special needs in their families. To say her work with the Special Olympics should be commended is an understatement. We have hosted statewide meets and have one of the most active Special Olympics chapters in all of New England. She also supported our students as they transitioned from high school into the community, setting them up with jobs and connecting them with the appropriate support system so that they were successful as adults. And, you know, Jen, Jen has visitors all the time, former students who come in and want to visit and share their successes. And, um, Jen, because she's in the high school, is someone I, I've gotten to know very well, and I appreciate your empathy, your enthusiasm for the job, and you will certainly be missed. Um, again, you know, wishing you the best in retirement, and hopefully it's a long and enjoyable one.
Thank you.
Where do we begin? Right, um, work with you, within the schools, outside the schools, uh, just you're, you're that person that holds that special bond with, with so many students, so many staff members, myself included. So, um, just enjoy retirement. I know I will see you in and around Milford, which will be great, and, uh, just thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much for your service. Your, your name comes up all the time in the most positive way ever, so I'm happy to have met you, but I'm sad that you're leaving. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I'm sure we're gonna pass the class again and again and again.
Thanks, Mike.
Congratulations on your retirement. You are here for 28 years, I would have you. That's also a very long time to do a lot for our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Bethany. Um, she's a consummate professional who's committed to supporting our students. She's worked and supported students through some of the most challenging mental health issues. She's caring, empathetic, thoughtful, and I think a creative problem solver, and really tries to develop, um, the best, like, systems, programs, and supports so students can kind of navigate the high school experience. And I think, you know, you're gonna be, you're gonna be missed. I think your contributions to the high school have been exceptional, and again, I want to wish you the absolute best in retirement, and, um, wish the best for you and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service in Milford. I'm married to a school psychologist of a different age group, but I understand the challenges you've had gone through throughout your career, so, you know, I really appreciate, you know, what Kevin had said, um, just about working with our students, and, and you've worked with students during a timeframe during COVID that was especially, especially different and unique. So, uh, I'm sure your, your job had to shift dramatically, uh, so we appreciate, we appreciate all your service. And you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations, and, uh, thank you for everything, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much.
How long were you here? I don't have that on my list.
Um, 22 years in Milford. Um, I was six years in Ashland.
Awesome.
Prior to that, so.
It's a, it's a great career as well. Thank you very much.
Twenty-two great years here.
That's great.
I'm very grateful.
So are we.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
So let's give him a round of applause, and then we'll have the picture. So maybe Craig, if you don't mind taking the picture, Matthew can come up, and then Josh, if you want to jump in as the high school principal.
Sure.
We're two and three of these guys. We'll go right over here.
You want to be in the picture?
No.
Craig, you on the picture? You get, you get through?
Want to take a picture or get? Okay.
Let's, let's, let's applaud him as he's going up there. Let's, let's applaud him as he's going up there.
All right. So, you good? All right, that brings us to agenda item number two, which is the approval of minutes. So we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. First one is from the June 6th, 2024 regular meeting. Anybody have anything on that?
Motion to approve the June 6th, 2024 regular session minutes.
Second, motion by Chris, second by Michael. All in favor? I'm gonna abstain. Oh, you have to, huh?
Oh, then we don't have a quorum.
We're not in a quorum. All right, we'll hold off. Uh, you know what, then I'm just gonna waive the rest of this agenda item until the others show up. So we'll pass on this for now.
Okay.
All right, announcements, correspondence, and distribution. Let's try that one. I'm good? Sure?
Yeah, um, I'd like to recognize the art behind me. Um, this is from Anne Schneider. Uh, she's the art teacher at Milford High School. It's actually from a student named Maya Santos. Uh, she's heading into her senior year. She's made over 25 in-depth artworks this year, ranging from drawing, printmaking, and college-level ceramics. Ms. Schneider thought that she deserved an entire wall dedicated to her work, and, and, um, she said that there's no class stated because she did all this work on her own, on her own free time, so, uh, I just want to recognize Maya for this exceptional art.
All right, yep, I've got a quick one, too. Our summer, our summer meal program will begin on June 24th and run until August 16th. Free lunch will be served each day at Memorial Elementary School from 11:00 to 12:30, uh, Monday through Friday. Memorial Elementary School is located at 12 Walnut Street in Milford. Please join us for lunch any weekday throughout the summer, and they typically have special events running on Fridays.
Awesome. Anything else?
That's it?
That's it, all right. Just take a quick note, we don't forget to do this. So invitation to speak is up next, and I'm gathering nobody is here for that. All right, excellent. We can move on from invitation to speak. Uh, let's go to the introduction of the Woodland Elementary School Principal. David? Thank you for coming. It's great to see you.
Thank you for having me. Um, I'm really excited. I have not anticipated a day like July 1st, like I have been in a long time. Um, my name's Dave McGovern. Uh, for the last nine years, I've been an administrator in the Mansfield Public Schools, for the last six, serving as principal of the Qualters Middle School. Um, before that, I had a 12-year, I'm losing track of the years, but I believe a 12-year classroom career in the town of Franklin. I'm really excited to get started. I'm really excited to give to a community that's given so much to me over the years and my family, and, um, again, I, I'm truly excited to be here, and I'm.
Excellent. Anybody have any comments?
Uh, welcome. Uh, my daughter's just entering Woodland, so I'm sure we'll be crossing paths quite a bit.
Absolutely.
I hope not.
His daughter's a real problem, dude.
No, no, absolutely, and, and also, I do want to recognize and thank all the people who've been so welcoming in Milford from, uh, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, but especially, uh, Principal Kernan and the administrative team at Woodland. Um, they've been really fantastic in helping ensure a smooth transition and, and I believe empowering me to really hit the ground running on July 1st, so.
Excellent.
Huge thank you to them.
Uh, thank you for coming out tonight. Obviously, it was nice to be able to, to see, put the face with the names, so we really appreciate that. Obviously, it was a very warm night, and you, you came in full principal attire, so we appreciate that.
I'm gonna, gonna foreshadow, I'll do, I'll wear a sport coat to avoid a tie anytime.
Concerning it's 100 degrees outside, yeah, so, but no, it was very nice to meet you, uh, nice little conversation before, so, and, uh, Jeff, just looking forward to your start on July 1st and throughout the next school year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Heck, we're good.
And one thing I'll say is, uh, Dave's hit the ground running, so he's been at a number of events. You probably saw him at the third grade welcome event.
Yeah, he was great.
And, uh, you know, he's just been engaged. He's been involved in the hiring process of new teachers, and, you know, just been part of the community for, over the last couple of months, and we're excited to have him start on July 1st, and looking forward to a long and successful tenure as principal of Woodland Elementary School.
Me too. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
See ya.
Nice to meet you.
All right. Well, that's 8:50. Well, we go on then to the final update of the current director of technology. Nancy?
Here I come. Last time.
It's our last chance to convince you not to go.
I know I have a big packet. I always do, but I will be brief. Um, so if you all look at your packet that you have in front of you, everything that is highlighted in bluish, it probably will be teal electronically that you're looking at. Those are all the new items that have been accomplished since our 12-7 presentation, um, the last time we met and had a discussion about what was happening in the offices of grants, technology, and media. I am going to skip all of the information that I wrote regarding, um, thank yous and whatnot. I'll save that to the end. I felt like I did that in December, so I will say a few other things before I leave, um, but I don't want to be overly repetitive, and I also don't want 34 years of emotion to come squirting out on TV.
It's an interesting turn of phrase.
So if you, uh, look at under grants, the first blue highlight is actually the FY24 Student Opportunity Act Plan. Um, the SOA is not a grant, however, a very, very important document for the Milford Public Schools. Um, this document was submitted to this committee on March 7th. You approved it. It was submitted to the DESE on March 11th. They approved it. Um, and the DSC approved it finally on April 12th, so I'm very pleased to let you know that the Department of Education readily approved the Milford Public Schools Student Opportunity Need Plan, which is a three-year plan to guide, um, the district as it moves forward in its excellence and towards excellence. Okay, so the next part is as of June 14th, the grants that have been secured. Um, there was a FY24 Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Grant Program that was secured. Um, there is really no monetary value. It's called the Diamond Level, which is the highest level that you can get. What this will afford the Milford Public Schools is the opportunity to share professional development from August to December with all staff within the Milford Public Schools by a company, and I probably shouldn't say that out loud, so the company is a very well-known one and very well-respected one. Um, so that's something that will be wonderful, um, moving forward to help protect the infrastructure of this district. Um, the FY24 Fund Code 311 Supporting Students SEL Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness Continu-, continuation grant was secured for $14,375. The FY24 United Way of Central, North Central, and South Central Mass ASOS subgrant was secured on behalf of the Milford Community Use Program for $20,000. Um, the FY25 Fund Code 0589 Civics Teaching and Learning for Milford High School for $26,400 was secured, and the FY25 Fund Code 117 SOA Evidence-Based Grant, which is, um, it's listed as 256495. This year, the allotment really is 240,000. There was an amendment to FY23. There was a little bit of remaining money for PD, which was amended into FY25. That's why you're seeing the jump there. So that has been submitted, and it's just waiting for fiscal approval right now through the DESE. Program approved already. Um, pending competitive grants as of 6/14. Uh, FY25 Fund Code 310 McKinney-Ventil Homeless Education Grant for $30,000, and FY25 Perkins Program Improvement in Equipment Grant, which was just submitted today on behalf of the district, for $51,467. And lastly, there's an FY25 Fund Code 320 Mass Grad Grant for $50,000, which is sitting at my desk yet to be written, okay? So those are some of the things that were secured in, in the competitive grant land. Entitlement Grants, um, a Chronic Absenteeism Recovery Grant, which was utilized by Stacy Middle School during the April Vacation, which was wonderful, um, for $10,000. The FY24 Influence Grant for $1,000. Uh, FY24 Fund Code 349 Homeless Emergency Grant for $7,000, and then another 349 Homeless Emergency Support Targeted Grant for $22,000. Um, there are no pending entitlement grants at this time. Um, if you can see under the charts, um, the chart that's under all of the grants, you can see the total amount of grants that have been secured since I've been in this position. Competitive entitlement and targeted totaling, uh, $13,222,733, okay? Um, I also would like to highlight, you know, anyone can write a grant, you guys. It's just what you want to do it. So I like to highlight other people in the district who are also doing a great job with grant writing, um, as I find out about them. So since we last spoke, um, Carrie Taylor secured an FY24 Fund Code 125 Math Acceleration Academy Grant for $42,272, and then Craig Consigli and Carol Solomon-Saversky secured an Ignite Reading Grant, which they can earn up to 600,000, um, probably, yeah, a little over 600,000, uh, to be used in reading, um, which is really cool down at the elementary school, K-12. Um, technology-wise, um, some of the things, there's, there's quite a few things since December, so we've been busy bees. Um, weekly scans are being conducted, um, every Wednesday, doing Serisma. Um, penetrus-, uh, penetration tests continue on with the new Von Hi software. Upgrading WAN connection, uh, the WAN connections with Comcast to 2G happened. There's, there's quite a few things, so I'm not going to read them all, but there's some really cool highlights that I'll say. I'm going to be skipping around. If anyone has any questions, again, in the blue is what's new, the teal by what you're looking at. Um, there's new firewalls for the school department and the FRC. Uh, MHS has a second network video recorder storage for cameras that were added. Uh, FRC got a replaced virtual host. Uh, we installed six turf cameras in May and June, and I am really very proud of this one. The teamwork diligently, we've been talking about this for four years to get this to happen. I'm a big succession planning person. No one person should have everything in their head. That's a dangerous thing for a business. Um, so there was a purchase of something called IT Glue, which is IT documentation software, which will allow us to map the district network and documents. Um, also develop how-tos and log technical processes for the district. So I think moving forward, that will be very useful for the network manager and also for the technology technicians, and also for the new, uh, director. Uh, E911 updates, the 100% processes were completed on June 10th. Testing systems with the SROs, which is the School Resource Offices, started on June 12th, and then they'll be do-, doing additional testing, um, and that is already scheduled for prior to the opening of the 2024-2025 school year. The Chromebook collections happened across district. Um, the tech team worked really diligently on that. You need to understand how many assets are being collected at the end of the year. It's well over 16,000, so I think they did okay. I think they did okay. The challenge now is getting them all checked in and then pushed back out, um, for the beginning of the next school year, which that certainly will happen. They work really hard. Um, there's been quite a few new flat panel installations across the district, and more are planned. They're here. They just need to be installed. And, let's see, a couple of other things. Um, our technology integration specialist, Mrs. Boyle, attended an AI and EDU conference, getting ready for what is yet to come with that in the future. And I am pleased to let you know that the tech integration specialists have been working together to develop an asynchronous PD training, um, regarding flat panels, and they also have, um, opened up the floor for any one-on-one presentations and small group presentations to learn how to do flat panels. Um, that just took a little while. It was done, and then it just needs to be redone a little bit. The sound didn't come out as good as we needed to. Um, and I'm also pleased to announce, just as of Tuesday night, Sarah Boyle, who is the tech integration specialist, was announced president-elect for MASQ. MASQ is New England's premier educational technology conference. Um, they hold a couple of those conferences throughout the year, but it's a strong network of educators that are very well-recognized and have been in existence for over 40 years. So I'd like to publicly congratulate Sarah. She is now the president-elect, which is very nice for Milford. And then in terms of what's happening in the district website, there's a new website development that's in place, and it's about 72% done at this point, and there's another meeting, so that will be finalized, um, within the upcoming months prior to the new school year. Okay, and then with press releases, just things that you see in Milford Free Press, um, trying to get ahold of things that are really interesting, that really highlight what wonderful stuff the district does pre-K through 12. So, and then the last thing is the value add of that second technology technician that you afforded the department in July. Um, last time we reported, um, it was November 30th, how many tickets, the average response time and average resolution time. So as of June 18th, 24, um, total tickets closed by the department were 7,269, and that is those that were recorded in incident IQ. Not all of those get recorded. Um, and then the average response time was seven hours, and the average resolution time was 1.2 days. So the department is really, really proud of that and continue to strive to not make staff wait. They're like snipers on those tickets. It's wonderful. Does anyone have any questions?
Matt? Go ahead. Um, quickly, thank you for all of this and all the updates and the highlights. It's great to, when you have a 15-page document, to know exactly what's new and what's changed, so appreciate that. One point of interest is the turf cameras. Um, I know that was something that we were hopeful for, so it sounds like that got together, so great. Thank you for taking care of that. And Mr. Chair, if you could let FinCom know, because that was something that FinCom had, a few of the FinCom members had asked of us, if we could budget for that based on protecting our investment on the turf field, so it's nice to see that. Those are in place.
I want to make sure I give the shout-out. Kathy Perry worked diligently to rework things, and Kevin Cullen also worked diligently, and we were talking incessantly about getting that done, because I, too, am an ex-athlete, and I think that should be protected.
Yes.
It's a beautiful, beautiful facility, so. It won't keep it safe, but it certainly will keep it safer.
Safer, secure.
100%, you know what I mean?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, wonderful. Well, I'll say it one more time. That's that and a half. Thank you for everything. Um, I do want to take a minute to just thank everybody, just real quickly. I'm not going to get into all of this. I, I just want to make sure that, um, I've, I've thanked the tech team incessantly, so I'm going to, they already know I love them, and I'm going to miss them. Um, there are quite a few people in my career here that, there's too many. I can't, I can't list them all, but I, I want everyone to know, whoever I have bumped up about, uh, against, I have learned something from you. Um, and I will say the most information, and I think the most growth I have ever had, is working with my students. So I would personally like to thank every one of my students for letting me be your teacher. Here comes my 34. Um, and I also really, really want to thank the first responders at Milford Public Schools. As administrators, we have to deal with a lot of really, really challenging things that we are not taught how to do in school, and I want those first responders to know that I never felt any safer than when you were by my side trying to get through these things. So I wanted to say thank you to them publicly. And I need to stop because I'm gonna cry, first that I am. So thanks for everything. I think I would have been okay if I wasn't looking at you two. My past students. So, and, um, that's that and a half. I'm gonna, that's it. And if anyone wants to read everything, they can see you, okay?
I apologize, Nancy, for my tardiness. I missed the retirement portion, which I hate to do, um, but I wish that we were able to, A, have a monetary total of the impact that you've had on our schools. I think we would all just be blown away when you think about all the roles that you've had, but particularly the most recent, and honestly, taking on the technology piece and directing our IT resources. I missed a global pandemic that no one saw coming. I think you've had some really, really big challenges that we couldn't have forecasted, and we're so grateful to have you in this role and all the others, and certainly, as a student from too many moons ago to count, uh, thank you for the difference.
Girl, we look good. We look good.
Thank you for the difference that you've made in all of our lives, Nancy. We wish you the best retirement.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. More than you know, Meg, more than you know.
Nate, thank you. Um, we've known you for a very long time. I was also a student of, uh, of Mace's back in the day. So thank you for what you've done. You know, uh, you took on a, um, a job that wasn't in your real house, and you made it into your real house, right? And like Meg said, during COVID, so you, you, uh, you really, um, went forward, and, you know, $13.2 million in grants in five years is pretty incredible. So thank you for what you've done.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure. I wanted to work as hard for your children as I hoped somebody worked for mine.
Thanks again for your 34 years. Obviously, got to know you when you were principal at Stacy, whom my two children grew up through at school, so it was, it was an amazing opportunity to work with you on the student council there. Um, your energy, your enthusiasm on a daily basis is beyond off the charts. Um, and I think that same energy enthusiasm that you brought to the technology side and the grant writing is, you know, you can see that, you know, the technology, technology is constantly growing, and you stay right up with it. The grants and $13 million over a five-year period is just nothing short of amazing. The grants and thirteen million dollars over a five-year period is just nothing short of amazing. So as, you know, Megan had said, it's just astounding. So we appreciate it. Enjoy your retirement.
And I'll never forget those green glasses.
And the green glasses.
You're welcome. It was my pleasure. It was my pleasure to work with your children and your, and your wife. A lovely, lovely family.
Hi.
Hi.
So.
Maddie.
I'll just echo, echo a lot of what they said, especially on the technology piece. You stepped into something that was definitely out of your wheelhouse and you took a district from a place of a fraction of the devices up to what we have now, sixteen thousand plus. And some of those numbers you shared in terms of response time. When we rely so much on technology, it's unacceptable for something to be down and out on anyone for any given amount of time. So your team should be proud of that. And one of the reasons why they're very good at that is because of your leadership. I've been in IT for twenty-something years. Michael's been there. You have a lot of smart people upstairs. There's a lot of working pieces and a lot of complicated assets that run in the technology department. And when you let people like us go on those, we tend to get really focused on the important things that are in front of us and we miss the big picture. And that's where your leadership really, really shined and taken that department into something that's been an incredible service for the entire district. So on top of everything else you've done, thank you for that piece. It's been a big help and I think we're set up to go very far in the future.
You are. And Mr. Kernan is going to be fantastic.
I hope so.
Yes. He's going to be like Joe Missoula with the Celtics. Take him to the next level.
Don't tell him that.
I know you're going to tell him.
No, don't share that with him. No.
I hope he hears that. Someone's going to tell him that on TV later.
I'll make sure he does. Thank you very much.
Can I just say one quick thing? So Nancy served the Milford Public Schools for thirty-four years as a teacher, coach, building administrator, and is a current role as the Director of Technology, Grants and Communication. She worked tirelessly, and I'm going to say that again, tirelessly to support students and educators throughout her career. As a principal, she was laser-focused on student learning and growth and cared deeply for the students and staff she served. She's an exceptional grant writer and took it personally, which I really appreciated whenever the district was not awarded a competitive grant. You focus on the losses, not the wins, right Nancy?
No, I did get mad.
I think her background as an athlete and a coach, no doubt led to the fierce way she approached every funding opportunity. This is, this is the most important thing and I think it's something nobody talked about tonight, but I think it's, it's the most important thing that Nancy brings to the table. She cared so deeply about her colleagues, students and families. She was always there to listen, support and help. To me, this will be your enduring legacy and why I'll, I'll miss you. And I don't think people understand all the people you've helped and supported over the years, because she never talked about it, but she always did it. And it was always quiet and it was always behind closed doors, but I saw it happen all the time and I appreciate it. I wish you the best. Your colleagues, but we've become good friends and I will miss our conversations almost daily basis. So best of luck in retirement and I will miss you Nancy. And don't be a stranger.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. I appreciate, I appreciate. I do appreciate it. We all stand?
We are.
Okay.
You can go.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to thank my very special friend, Greg Consiglio. My peer that I went to mentor, then boss, and now you can be my friend.
Nancy, we've always been friends.
I know.
At least in my mind.
Yeah, always. Bye, love you.
Bye.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to make one shift on the agenda and I'm going to bring the MSBA school building project update up so we can get to the appointments of the community members quickly and then we'll move on to our school plans. So if you want to take that?
Sure. As everybody knows, we're going to vote on tonight our two appointment, two president appointments for the school building committee tonight. So the letters of intent were due Monday, so we had twenty-three people who submitted between this, this board and town hall. It's all one, one list. So twenty-three people, I would say a vast majority of those people were qualified, which is great to get such a good response. So I mean personally, I went through all twenty-three of those multiple times, created my own little rubric, made some phone calls. So yeah, I, I have two recommendations. I know Chris has gone through them all too, so I don't know how I want to go through them.
I guess, yeah, first, Mike, thanks for all the, the background work on this and the rubric and hounding me incessantly to make sure I touch everything. So, yeah, and bouncing committee and work and everything else. So now I appreciate that. But again, it was this, the rubric itself was a good assist in, in the evaluation process. So again, just want to give you kudos to that. So appreciate that. Again, as Mike had stated, a lot of great candidates, a lot of, when you're reading through the resumes, just the, the background and the experience that people that were interested were very telling of why they wanted to get involved in this project. So we're very excited for it.
Yeah, so I'm, in going through the twenty-three applications, two popped up to the top for me. One of them, which is pretty interesting because it came up multiple times with multiple people, which is Carmen Torres. Her, her resume is pretty detailed. She's a designer, works for, you know, Perksman East and she's, she's, she's actually here. So I think we should give her three minutes to kind of talk about her qualifications and the.
Please, please.
Thank you for taking the time to come and hang out with us.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me and I'm very happy to be considered. My name is Carmen Torres. I'm actually a couple of blocks away from the high school. I've moved to Milford around four years ago. My husband and I just fell in love with a really beautiful house and setting roots here has been beyond words. Our neighbors are amazing and we really have appreciating of the welcoming Milford community. And so when this opportunity arose, I actually saw it on, on a press release on, on one of the newspapers online. I just thought this was the perfect way to hopefully give back to the community that I'm, I'm growing to love very much and something that I literally do every day. I live and breathe it. To me, architecture is a vocation. I've always loved it. I grew up with it. Both of my parents were in the field actually, and so it's just something that's always been part of me. In terms of my current experience, I actually started in Texas. Higher ed was my main sector and it was mainly construction administration and documentation. As I grew up and, and basically moved on to Massachusetts, now I've actually been introduced, thank you for Perkins Eastman, to introduce me to K-12. So I'm still in the higher ed sector, but I've been able to have the opportunity to participate in K-12 schools. In particular, one in Cambridge that I think is, is fairly similar in terms of the challenges that that community had to work through, because they also faced a nineteen seventies building that needed upgrading and they also faced the difficult choices of, do we keep it? Do we add to it? Do we just start from scratch? And there, there's very interesting conversations that had to be worked through. And so I've been seeing that project basically my entire time there. It's been five years of, of just seeing it come to life. It's by Fresh Pond. If you care to see it. But it, it's, it's truly been a wonderful and wealth of experience. In particular, as it comes to my passion for sustainability, I am very passionate about the subject. I specialize in healthy materials. I also specialize in getting renewables on site. So there's, there's a wealth of information. I can talk your ear all day about, but I, I did bring resumes in case you needed to see them in person printed. But yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good. We had a phone conversation yesterday.
You're good.
So, yeah, so. Got a great exchange.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to motion to have Carmen Torres be part of the school building committee. Second.
So we have a motion by Brendan to appoint Carmen Torres and a second by Michael. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We do need one more.
Yeah, the second person who popped up was Patrick Hollen. You know, Patrick, I talked to him. He also sent a nice letter of intent. You know, he served on Woodland Building Committee, which I keep hearing from people like Craig and Kevin and members of the community on how well it went. And when you go to the NSBA's website, it's actually a premier project still, right? So, you know, Patrick served on that for six years. We saw, he was there in the beginning. He defended it in front of the NSBA. And, you know, he was there until the building was built and then he cycled off when he decided to come off school committee. He's also been involved in the housing authority for six years. So I, you know, one of my thoughts was, you know, bringing somebody else on, on the, on the committee who has experience, who also has, you know, children, young children in the system. I think Patrick would be a huge asset to the, to the group.
I think also Patrick, you know, he, he brings a little bit different kind of, he doesn't have the construction background from a day-to-day basis, but he's a lawyer. And so he brings that viewpoint and that level of detail that, you know, I think will be a very valuable asset to the, to the group. You know, Patrick's someone that, when I first got on the committee, that I reached out to just as far as how to be a better school committee person. And he was always willing to talk to me about that. So I feel like his, his approach, his accessibility and just his passion for the Milford School District would again would be a, a great addition to the committee.
Anybody have a motion?
So I will motion to add Mr. Patrick Hollen to the Milford High School School Building Committee.
Second.
Motion by Chris and second by Michael. All in favor?
I'm going to abstain from that one, Matt, just in the interest of being related. I certainly support Patrick and know he will be a great addition, but just in addition, I'll abstain.
Sure. So that was four in favor and Megan abstained. So that passes. There we go. Awesome. Thank you very much. All right.
Matt, if I could, I just wanted to commend Michael and Matt on the work on that. I think we had twenty, thank you, Michael and Chris, even though I was looking at Chris and saying that. Because I don't think we would have had twenty-three great candidates had all of that outreach and press release and communication not happened. And so I think we're really fortunate to have a team that's going to really propel this community forward by the addition of Carmen and Patrick. So I just wanted to thank you both for all the effort because I didn't have them without you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for that. And I'm sure you'll be just scratching the surface and digging into this project as you go, so looking forward to your updates.
Exactly.
All right, so we can get.
Carmen, you're welcome to stay for.
Yeah, don't feel like.
Feel free to go to more air conditioning.
So that will get us back in order. We'll go to the handbook and school improvement plans and I have Stacy Middle School up first. Let me catch up on my notes a bit.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Thank you for coming. Wonderful. All right, we have, hold on, I'll get there. Handbook changes. We'll take care of the handbook changes first. Those were clearly and neatly outlined. Thank you very much for that. Makes our job a little easier to be able to see what's changing. So any questions or comments on the handbook changes from the committee? Do you guys have anything on those?
Nope. They were all just very either new policies or just changing some wording here and there, but there weren't any major changes.
Very good. All right, so I need a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Stacy Middle School handbook.
So moves.
Motion by Michael. Second by Brendan. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Now we can move on to the, the plan, please.
All right, so just to quickly update where we were a couple of years ago. Our original school improvement plan reflected, was supposed to reflect three school years. We have adjusted and combined the goals to better reflect the school's needs. I will provide a quick update. We'll provide a quick update on like the previous goals and then we'll introduce the, the new goals. My first goal was really focused on school culture. And originally when we had written this goal back on twenty twenty-two, there were one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three discipline referrals, of which two hundred eighty-six resulted in suspensions. And our goal had been to decrease that by twenty percent. We actually managed to decrease that by nineteen point four percent. When we did our math, there were a total of fourteen, well, one thousand four hundred and three disciplinary referrals, of which seventy-three resulted in suspensions. Close to seven hundred other referrals were quoted as classroom incidents or non-violent incidents that resulted in classroom disruptions. Pretty much what this means is that some of the things that we have put into place, like our core values, explicitly teaching or supporting our students with modeling behavior or what is expected of them, supporting teachers and providing professional development, you know, using just shared common language, has been working. I will also say that our I-Decide programming, which was the programming for first and second offenders of vaping or substance abuse, you know, we start, we adopted it this year and we've had, we've seen some success. These are our MCIA data. We've shown significant growth in student physical safety and sense of belonging, where we were originally in the warning area of the MCIA chart and we are currently very close to the approval. Not there yet, but we're in the growth. So that actually shows great growth from, and this is something that our students and teachers take, the, the survey. Student sense of belonging, when all students were surveyed, we were, three years ago, we were in the growth area. As of this year, we're in the, a little bit above the approval area. And in all, all data, including student, teachers and school data, we have also grown significantly closer to the approval line. Some of the things I've taken to reach this goal has been implementing monthly SEL blocks, assemblies to support the climate and culture. We've had a, we designed and organized a club activity fair back in September to promote clubs and increase participation. Out of that, we came up with five more clubs, which was great. We also had a sixth grade positive climate initiative where we supported students in being responsible, the, and being prepared for school, which was spearheaded by our assistant principal, Mrs. Torres. And we also had a lot of opening the year activities with team building, team building focused activities for students. We also did a few different activities for teachers as well. One included a book club and the other one included a step challenge. So we have been doing a lot of work around our school climate and culture to support both our staff and our students. The next goal was around co-teaching. We have continued with providing teachers professional development in-house and also through the BER. Our instructional coach has been working very closely with specific teams to support that. I will say that we have seen an improvement in our I-Ready scores, which is a diagnostic that we take three times a year. The percentage of students at or above grade level improved from fall to our most recent diagnostic across all grades. Grade six showed an increase from twenty-four percent to thirty-one percent. Grade seven showed an increase from seventeen percent to twenty-one percent and grade eight showed an increase from fifteen percent to twenty percent. So we are very hopeful. This is actually with us just piloting some of the curriculum that we were doing through the GLEAM program. So now that we have picked a curriculum, which is Amplify, we're hopeful that we're going to see more growth in our students progressing. Our math I-Ready analysis, we have also seen an improvement where our grade six students showed an increase from six percent to seventeen percent. These would have been the students that also received the IEM curriculum at Woodland in fifth grade. So that, this is a group that has now done IEM for two years. So it was great to see that increase. Grade seven shows an increase from two percent to six percent and grade eight shows an increase from four percent to thirteen percent. So I think that in general with our new curriculum, but also our co-teaching method and, and new, new teaching strategies has shown some progress and improvement. Goal three was really focused on culture responsive curriculum. It was looking at reviewing analyzing our current classroom practices, ensuring that we had inclusive language, that it was reflective of our students. I will say in general, what we have done here is we have looked at curriculum like IEM, like Amplify, look at Open SAIAD and look at how are they reflective to our students. We've had great conversations with our CTLs to look at, you know, including more novels or including more examples of how this reflects our students. So with that being said, the three that were added last year had been implementing IEM, the GLEAM program, which was assessing our current ELA program and curriculum and choosing one and aligning our curriculum and practices. What we have decided, we've worked closely with our assistant superintendent and our directors across the district to really look at how do we make this more aligned to what we're doing in support of all of our students. So this school year, I am. So this school year, I am, or for this meeting, I am proposing three new goals to replace the current goals. One of them really looking at high-quality instructional materials and students and staff having access to that. So what would that look like? It'll be ensuring that all of our students and all of our staff have high-quality instructional, access to high-quality instructional materials through professional development, through workshops, aligning our materials with our standards for consistency, implementing materials faithfully and adapting them to meet diverse needs. And our goal is to really use our data dashboards to track our progress, conduct culture responsive teaching training, and look at what our programming is, how our programming is doing through some of our diagnostics. The third goal would be the actual implementation of the high-quality instructional materials. So that would look like, again, providing professional development, just like we did with IEM, where we had coaches that came in and supported our teachers with implementing and differentiating the work for our students, looking at doing the same thing with our Amplify curriculum, really supporting the co-teaching model and conducting regular walkthroughs with our administrative team. And then our third goal would be focused on support services. That includes MTSS and attendance and any behavioral or social emotional needs. And the idea is to really look at the MTSS that we have developed as a district and ensuring that we are following it in a way where it's equitable to all of our students and that we're ensuring that all of our students are receiving the same amount of time to access the curriculum and the resources. And then attendance, we will continue working with our attendance supervisors. Our assistant principals do an amazing job meeting with them and really seeking support from them to support our students. So that was a lot in fast talking, so you let me know if there's anything I need to repeat.
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Thank you for all the great work.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, Carmen. So how do we think about, obviously it's like a very tight budget year, so how do we think about sort of implementation of all of this high-quality instructional materials in regards to budget? Sort of like, what are the materials that are coming? How do we think about dollars necessary to support this and what that looks like?
Kevin's giving me all the money I asked for, so.
Excellent.
I will say that between...
This is where the presentation goes off the rails.
Between Carol's work with the GLEAM program, they'll be supplying all of the ELA curriculum materials.
Got it.
IEM, we're still under the grant that Nancy just spoke about with Kerry, so that will still be supported through that. And OpenSai was already built into our budget, so we should be okay.
Okay. So for the core type classes, the funding essentially has already been provided, so the materials are kind of being rolled out as part of that, is how to think about it. That's super helpful. Okay, thanks. I know we had talked about, and it's not necessarily part of this plan, but I know we had talked about, as we do curriculum changes, right, so we have the new math curriculum, which is awesome that we're offering students, and I know we're going to make some changes to how we're doing language. How do we communicate that to families? It's just more of a general question. I think, I sent a child to Stacy a lot of years ago, I'm about to send another, right? So I would sort of expect more or less the same things, but maybe things are changing. So kind of, how do we, I'm just curious how we communicate stuff to families? Things like that. I'm talking particularly about the foreign language, if you want to use that as an example.
Yeah, so we did send out letters to everyone, just kind of explain what was going on. And then we did set up times for people to come in and meet with us. I don't know if that was very well shared, like I don't know if I communicated that very well enough. I think that only a handful reached out, and I'm wondering if that was more of a...
Timing or...
Exactly, because we didn't really do that work until later in the school year.
Yep.
But that's how we've done most of the work, is through our newsletter or through sending just blackmail, yeah, blackboard mail to everyone.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm a big believer in like communication is free.
She's not blackmailing anybody.
I mean blackmail anyone, blackboard mail to everyone.
I'm a big believer in communication is free, and so we probably focus on telling sixth-grade families what to expect, but even incoming families, it'd be helpful as you're doing orientation, just to kind of share the new math program that maybe their older student didn't have, or the new kind of way we're going to do language. Just, I think change can be hard, and the more people know, it's just easier to accommodate.
And our teachers did an excellent job at communicating with individual families that may be surprised
Perfect.
by placement.
With the data. Yep.
They really worked well.
That's great. Thanks, Richard.
So the co-teaching, which I think is great. How is the faculty receiving it?
I think overall well. I think right now what we're working on is the marriages, like the partnerships that, you know, are working out. And we're working very closely with teachers to kind of say, well, let's give it a try. One of our half-day was really dedicated on just looking at what deeper norms means and looking at, okay, how do we partner up? We called it kind of like, instead of running to divorce, we're going to do some marriage counseling here. And we looked at what that would look like, looking at what is the deeper norm, and how do we ensure that when we're coming together, we're respecting each other's philosophies, but also knowing that what we want to do is to have a higher impact on student learning. There are some that it worked, and there are others that did have to get a divorce, and that's okay. And we'll try it again this school year and keep working with it. But I would say overall, teachers have been very welcoming to co-teaching.
Thank you very much for presenting tonight. Obviously, it's a, there's a lot of work that goes into this. I've asked all the other principals the same question. How are you doing as far as parent involvement on these school councils?
It's been a struggle this year. This is actually the first year in the last few years that we've been, the administrators at Stacy, that I've seen such a decline in our numbers, both school council and our PTO. So I have been trying to work with my current school council to figure out how we can increase that. So we're going to try to start with our grade six families to say, you know, in a way to re-engage them and say, you know, we can work together for the next three years and try to figure out if that's a way that we can bring them in. But I would say this is the first time where it's been low attendance.
Yeah, and the other principals have said the same thing. It's just that it's hard to get parents and guardians through the door, it seems like, you know. And kind of to Megan's point where the communication, right, so where is that magic communication wand from that part of it? So I wish I had the answer. It's just something that, again, I would, I'd bring up and that I hope that, you know, we can continue to discuss that and keep that on the radar to try to have our families engage as much as possible and to know about these new math curriculums and how we roll through. So I appreciate that. And then other part, I'd just say thank you for, this is kind of the roadmap, right, where one of the other principals described that. So it kind of gives us that roadmap for each school, so we appreciate, again, all the work that goes into it. So we can see what's going on in each individual school as we're kind of at that higher level. So thank you.
Since you're here, are you doing a sixth-grade orientation?
I think it's, I don't think.
Give me a note.
I'll send you a note. No, but we're going to do similar to what we did last year, where we held it all the same day as the open house, the district-wide open house.
Great.
And kind of have just one, one big open house. Yeah.
So I just wanted to commend you guys on the work that you're doing with the culture at that school. It's the only topic I ever end up talking about with Stacy, and I think it's because my kids are so young, people just ask certain questions. And I know when you guys took over, there was a lot to do, and I don't have the data, I don't think I have the data in front of you that you're reading off of. But the trend is going in a great direction, and I'm going to count whatever it was, nineteen point four as twenty percent. That's close enough for me to hit your goal. So I'm happy to hear that, and I think that you guys should be pretty proud of the work that you're doing, and it's going in a great direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good? I'm good. All right.
Motion to approve Stacy's school improvement plan, Matt?
Thank you very much, Megan. We have a motion by Megan to approve the plan.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great summer, everyone.
You too.
All right, we can move on next to the more protective project. Not a project, sorry. Handbook and plan, we're not on the project yet. Dr. Ottman, thank you for coming.
Pleasure.
So I see in our agenda handbook changes one and handbook changes two, so... Is that accurate? Are they two separate?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on these two pieces?
Thank you for adding the AI stuff. I think it's, I went through it and I think it's super reasonable, and I think it's given clear direction to the body of...
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, just quickly, what Michael, echoing what Michael said, it's nice to see that. It's obviously a very developing technology that is going to be, I would think, hard to police. So at least we're starting to get that roadmap together and policing together, so yeah. Is there anything you want to share on those, or are they good?
I'm fine if you are.
All right. I would take a motion to accept all of the changes in the twenty-four, twenty-five handbook for Milford High School. Motion by Brendan. Second by Michael. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, you can start on your plan, please.
All right. So our school improvement plan is somewhat narrower than it's been in the past, but none of the focus areas are new. And I frankly anticipate that all of these will remain focus areas for as long as I'm the principal of Milford High School. Chronic absenteeism is our number one priority. We know that there is an extremely strong correlation between student attendance and academic outcomes, and I'm convinced that the number one way for us to raise academic achievement is to try to improve attendance for students who are not attending school frequently enough. While we would love to grow the team of people that are focused on this work, that wasn't in the cards this year in tight fiscal conditions. And so the work for us is to continue to become more efficient, more effective with the resources that we currently have available. Our second goal is around academic advising, which has also been a multi-year focus for us. The particular focus for FY twenty-five has emerged strongly from the work that we did this year through the Meeting the Moment Grant with the Barr Foundation. And we want to work in the coming year to bring a proposal to the school committee at some point in the next ten to twelve months around more flexible graduation requirements for students that would allow students to have a higher level of control over their academic experience here at Milford High School and to provide students with a higher level of personalization over their academic experience. Our third goal is focused on college readiness. Again, this has been on the school improvement plan, I believe, every year that I've served as principal. Our specific focus this year is that we want to use our Flex Blocks, which is twice a week, once on Monday afternoon, I'm sorry, once on Monday afternoon and once on Wednesday afternoon, as a place where we can deliver a college planning workshop series that is leveraging the framework that we use in our One Goal program. Our One Goal students have been telling us very clearly that what they're receiving in One Goal is exactly what they need. And we're hearing from other students that are not in the One Goal program that they want to get some of what the One Goal students are receiving. The particular part of the One Goal framework that we hope to emphasize in the coming year, it's a really simple concept, and I think it's one that I want to familiarize the school committee with, is when we think about post-secondary educational planning, we want students to be thinking about academic fit, personal fit, and financial fit. We know that in too many cases, financial fit is not a criteria that is given equal weight in students and families' planning around post-secondary education. And we know that one of the leading reasons why students who enroll in college but fail to complete degrees is because they failed to enroll in colleges that are a financial fit. And so we really want to be working together as a team to support students and families in assessing financial fit. And we know that One Goal provides both a framework and a set of tools that we want to scale up to students who are not enrolled in the One Goal program. The fourth focus area is around mental health. We have a host of initiatives that we have been pursuing for multiple years. We will continue to pursue to try to promote wellness here at school. And then on the other side of the coin is refining our systems for intervening with students when they're struggling with their mental health. As I think the committee is familiar with, Dr. Kinsigley's been leading a district-wide team to improve our multi-tiered systems of support across all the buildings in the district, and this will be a major focus area for us at Milford High School next year as well. And with respect to professional development, we are hoping to bring about a significant change in how we allocate professional development time in Milford High School next year. For the bulk of my tenure, we have focused the majority of professional development time on departmental-level work. And while I think that has served us well in many respects, we also know that we have work to do in strengthening our professional culture here in school, given the rapid expansion of our faculty and the turnover of faculty. We have many adults who work here in this building who do not have strong relationships with many other adults in this building. And for us to work together as a team, we need to develop relationships outside of our departments. And for us to play together like a team, we need to be talking about educational matters across departments. And so departments are not just teams working in isolation, but that all of our departments are working together as a cohesive unit. And as we work together across departments, we really want to focus on matters of inclusive pedagogy and how those relate to matters of course leveling here at Milford High School. We want to make sure that all of our teachers are ready to serve the very, very diverse student body that we have here in Milford High School. And the other focus area, and this complements the proposed revision to the handbook which you just approved, is around artificial intelligence in education. We have two pieces of, two pieces of work that we need to try to work on simultaneously. The first of which is trying to mitigate the risks that artificial intelligence posed to academic integrity, and the second of which is trying to leverage the power of artificial intelligence to improve student learning outcomes. And so I, again, anticipate that we will be working on this for as long as I'm in this business. But it's an area that we really need to start to focus our attention on in the coming year.
Questions?
I'm sorry. You heard me ask, Mr. West. What is the parent involvement? How you, what are you seeing? Is there any plan to...
So we have, we have two parents who consistently attended school improvement council meetings this year. That does not represent a change in my seven-year tenure. We've regularly had anywhere from two to three parents who are consistently attending meetings. I would love to see a higher rate of participation, but I'm thankful that we've been able to at least maintain a consistent level of participation from parents during my seven-year tenure.
How about students?
We have an excellent representation of students on the school improvement council. We have, I believe, eighteen to twenty-two students on school improvement council, stretching across all four grade levels.
So that kind of offsets that involvement, I guess.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, having students involved in the school improvement council is developmentally appropriate at the secondary level in a way that you don't have with our younger students. And it's both developmentally appropriate to have them involved in school improvement council, and they're able to bring a very important perspective to our conversations about making the school the best place it can be.
I appreciate that. That's good to know. And then quickly, going to the first, your first point of chronic absenteeism. I'm assuming you still do the great presentation to every freshman class, and that will continue on as showing the effects of chronic absenteeism to grade point average and how it affects...
We will continue to use education of both students and parents as one part of our strategy to combat chronic absenteeism. But we've also seen that it needs to be a multifaceted strategy. And the students who are in need of the greatest level of support are oftentimes or almost always facing very profound barriers in their life that are negatively impacting their ability to attend school on a regular basis. And while education plays an important role in trying to promote strong attendance across all students, the students who are in the greatest need of intervention, education is going to be necessary but not sufficient.
And then, yeah, quickly, yeah, so that academic roadmap that you're hoping to try to modify, that's something later in the year that you foresee generally...
Well, so I hope to be bringing a proposal to the committee within ten to twelve months. This would require changes to our handbook. And so our school, you know, we need our faculty to work on this. We ultimately need our school improvement council to work on it as well to get behind it. We ultimately need to bring it to the school committee. So I anticipate, I think if we're successful, I'll be speaking to you some point in March or April of two thousand and twenty-five.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the hard work that goes involved in this.
Thank you.
Just quickly, Josh, I think these are all incredibly important goals for, thank you for that. I think you're missing one important one, which I know you're doing anyway, is sort of this building of this educational plan. So I just don't want to, like, I know in addition to this, you're also doing a lot of other critical work for our district, so just wanted to thank you for that. I was just curious on the college readiness, kind of who's your target audience come this fall? Like in terms of, do you start with a particular grade level? Can you roll it out across the board? Kind of like, who is that in terms of the...
Yeah, so the workshop series that we intend to launch in the next year, we want to make it open for any student who wants to be there. We see real variations in students into when they are ready to tune into post-secondary planning. We have some students who, they walk in here as fourteen-year-old ninth graders, and they are starving for information about post-secondary educational planning. And we have some eighteen-year-old seniors who we are chasing on their way out the door to help them try to figure it out.
Okay, that's excellent.
We want to make it available to all students whenever they are ready to access those learning opportunities.
That's a great answer. And then I was also just curious more from my own knowledge, who currently is facilitating? What type of role is facilitating the One Goal program?
Sure, uh, so Anne Marie Franzen is our One Goal Program Director. Anne Marie is a longtime faculty member here at Milford High School. Uh, she's taught Spanish at Milford High School, I believe, for over a decade. She's been making a gradual conversion into our full-time One Goal teacher, which the school committee in the town has supported with the addition of a new Spanish teacher, I believe, neither fiscal year twenty-three or twenty-four, and that's allowed us to
Great.
transition Anne Marie. And next year is going to be her first year, um, as our full-time One Goal teacher. Um, this year she was also teaching Spanish. Next year is going to be one hundred percent One Goal.
And about how many students are currently involved in that?
So we will serve, next year we will have two sections of eleventh graders and two sections of twelfth graders. So between those four sections, I believe we're going to serve a little over eighty students, eighty, eighty-five students. Anne Marie will also be supporting students who graduated from Milford High School in the class of two thousand and twenty-four who participated in One Goal. So we call that Y three or year three support. So year one is their eleventh grade year, year two is their twelfth grade year, year three is their first year in college, and Anne Marie will be providing Y three support to a little over forty students in the class of two thousand and twenty-four.
That's incredible, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Josh, this is awesome. Uh, I think this is, this is setting the bar. This is not raising the bar, this is setting the bar. So, um, really happy to see this, um, from you. With the chronic absenteeism, um, you know, I've been reading a lot of articles about every district struggling with this, and the ideas that they are trying to come up with to lower that rate. Is there any idea out there that you've seen that we're not doing that you want to implement? Or, uh, any particular ideas on how we can address this further?
I think long-term, we need to increase the number of attendance interventionists that are working in the district. We have seen that Victor Canaro and Dale Olson have been able to generate excellent returns on investment. Um, they are, you know, uh, Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Kinsigley, can correct me if I'm speaking out of term. I would say they are men who are not trained as social workers that are working as social workers. Um, they're doing individual case management, they're developing relationships with students and families, and those are long-term relationships. And I think change occurs incrementally over long periods of time with sustained support, um, from our interventionists. In the interim period where we're making do with what we have, I think we need to take a data-driven approach. Um, and we have scarce resources to allocate, and we need to be very strategic about where we allocate them. And that allocation shouldn't be done, uh, with our gut, uh, but should be done, uh, with a really sharp focus on data. Uh, at the secondary level, um, I believe that we really need to focus on students who are what I would call liminal, um, in that they're probably attending school at rates above seventy-five percent but below eighty-five percent. Uh, regrettably, we have students that are attending school at rates below seventy-five percent. I think if we have a teenager who's attending school at rates of seventy-five percent, we can make an impact, but it's going to require a really large investment of resources to make an impact on a student who's missing so much school. When you have students in that seventy-five to eighty-five percent range, that's where I think with a moderate investment of time and energy, you can generate a return in terms of improvements in their attendance rates.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to improve Josh's school improvement plan for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year.
Thank you, a motion by Megan. I'll second. Second by Chris. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming and presenting.
If you support, I think we're going to stick around for a couple more, Chair, Chair.
Yes, one more, so we'll, uh.
Maybe even a couple more.
Actually, yeah, you do have one, you're right. All right, um, Connections Program presentation.
Let me, uh, sort of move over chair and make space for my colleagues to step up.
Please.
Hi, um, I'm Michael Regal Team, um, Milford resident for the last, I don't know, ten or twelve years. Actually, I shouldn't have that. Uh, two thousand and fourteen, uh, yeah, fourteen years. Um, I'm a retired school teacher. Um, I taught science, physical science, and was an instructor at Leslie College, um, working with, um, pre-practicum students, teaching the Science Methods class. Um, when I retired two thousand and nineteen, um, and I got involved in the Connections Program, um, which was really, someone, a member of the community identified the need um, for there to be a, a way to help students who are academically excelling, who are headed off to college, who are probably socially economically not in great shape. But most important of all, um, I use the, the analogy that they don't have parents who are on the sidelines at the soccer, football, cheerleading, softball games, who are talking to their neighbors about what it takes to go to college. So in ninth grade and, and tenth grade, there, there's not these conversations about what's going to happen in a couple of years? What, what are you worried about? What are you doing? Are you aware of, are you aware of this grant? Are you aware of that grant? Are you aware of, of the fact that there's money out there? Um, and so we saw a need to put something together that would do a one-to-one pairing of volunteers from the community with strong high, Milford High School students. And, and just act as that, the, the uncle, as the, the neighbor who's helping. Right now, I've got a, a kid who lives next door to me, who, I'm just, as a friend, you know, nothing to do with the connection program, but just as a friend, I'm like, you know, so where are you looking? Like, so what are you doing? Where are you visiting? You're junior, you're going off to, you're going to go check out some colleges this summer? Hey, I got a piece of advice for you. Like, don't go to your first choice, don't do your trip to the first choice college as your first trip. Right, go, go do a baseline trip. Go to someplace that, you know, would be good, but it's not your first choice. Get some practice. Um, and so we put together the Connections Program. Um, and, you know, we, we pick up, we are lucky to be allowed to work with the students. You know, we do a vetting process, they, the students, the parents, I mean, the volunteers are all quarried. Um, and we start working with the students when they're in the ninth grade, and we follow them through till they graduate. Um, and I, we've actually been very lucky, we have a student who graduated last year, Daniella. Um, I'm just going to, and I, I know it's late, and I know your son's here. Um, but if you could just tell a little bit about your background, um, and then you can go, and I can answer questions and continue to talk.
Hello, my name's Daniella Badaris. Uh, I just graduated last year from Milford High, and this is, I moved into sophomore year up from A M State, um, well, wanting to become a teacher and wanting to return back here. That was the goal. Um, so, um, when I first started high school, I didn't know anything, like I said, like, eh, like over here we said, I didn't know anything. I didn't know anything about college. My parents were, my mom was, was not, did not know anything about the system. I did not know what the FASSA was, I did not know any colleges, where I wanted to go, where I wanted to be. And then I got, I remember it all, and like chose me, I got this email about Connections, I was like, this is a program, let's just check it out. And I think it was going to make a big impact in my life, but here I am five years later, and I'm still connected with my mentor, and she's still talking with me and still, like, pushing me and helping me and all of that. So I feel like if this program has really helped me so much, I feel like that without this program and without, like, the good counseling that I have from Miss Mallory at Milford High, I wouldn't be where I am now. And I have had a lot of challenges, I've, I had my, I'm very sorry for my son, I had to bring him along, um, he's supposed to be before. Um, but I'm glad that my mentor helped me and she pushed me through, and she, until now, we're, we're still very close, and she still bugs me about my classes and how commuting is and gases, gas prices. She's been a really good help, but I feel like that if it were not for Connections and the, the help of Milford High, I would not be where I am. She helped me with the FASSA, she, we went on, like, college trips and everything. But like I said, my mom had no idea. She told, the day that I went to high school, she just said, I want you to go to college. I don't know, and it was all on me, and that weight was all on me. And like, this really stuck really hard to my heart. Like, my mom was never there for concerts or for, like, sports games, she wasn't talking to other parents or any of that, like, over here. She was working all day, and some days I wouldn't even see her until, like, later at night, or sometimes she would work nights, and I'd see her just for her to make a living for us. And that was basically it, but I'm really glad that I had my mentor, and like, I was able to meet her here in high school and not take time away because I had to go work, be in school, and take care of my little child. So it was great that I had that program, and it was rarely during flex time, I used to meet her, and some days it was really hard. But she, she had, like, this whole book lined out, and she's like, this is what you have to do your freshman year, and so you have to do your sophomore year, and your junior year, and we, we made it. She, maybe she got me into the National Art Study, I didn't even know, uh, what that was. I had to do volunteering hours, and I'm like, I'm a mom, how is this to do that? I work, but I was able to get, well, some community service hours in the library. But she was basically like my go-to when I had any questions about college, school, or anything. And until now, she's really connected, and I feel like the goal is until graduation. But I feel like with the Connections Program with me, basically, with me essentially, she's still with me. I still talk to her, like, we go out now to Panera, and we still talk about life and how I say college is a lot. College is like, I'm taking a summer class as well. I'm going to take two summer classes, so I'm taking, like, basically no vacation, but it's okay. Um, we just want to get done with college and all of that. And I never knew how hard a summer class was, and she did, she did tell me, summer class is hard, but she, I did not know and listen. I was like, something to do every single night, so it's great. But I feel like I would, I wouldn't be here without her, and she's guided me very much, and I feel like Connections is a great program that for first-generation students, like I said with myself, as a first-generation student, I'm proud to say, like, I'm grateful to have the Connections Program, and I'm grateful hopefully in the next three years to graduate and be like, I'm, my kid could say, like, I'm not a first-generation, and my mom graduated, and I, I have, like, some knowledge now to guide him and say, this is what college is, this is what FASSA is, and for him not to struggle and for him, like, I had to translate documents for my, my mom, I had to talk to her, um, go to health visits and everything, and I had to be pulled from school sometimes and to take care of my brothers. And on top of that, I was still succeeding, no one knew about my circumstances. Like I said, I was still fairly high on the honor roll a lot. And it's, until now, I still, I still get C's list at college and everything, so we're still trying. But like I said, with the Connections Program, they've helped very much, and I'm very thankful for that program in impacting, like, my life and how it, hopefully is going to make me a successful person and be back here one day. But yeah, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's all good.
Thank you, no, that's okay, thank you for coming.
Um.
Good. Do people have questions for?
Yeah, before you go down, I just want to interject, you are already successful, so don't sell yourself short. You've already accomplished more than many people will ever in their lifetime. Many of us sitting at this table have also brought our young children to these meetings, so never apologize for that adorable person, he's amazing. Uh, I just wanted to commend you. I think school is hard, college is hard, and also navigating all the things you've talked about is incredible. I'm curious how long you were in the Milford Public School system for?
I've been here since I was five.
Since you were five?
I left for a year, but I've, I've come back, and I don't know, Milford, just Milford. I love to see how it's grown. I'm very thankful for this community of how much it's grown. When I started, it was just me and this other girl, and I've never had someone, my mom was never had the opportunity from people translating for her when, at that time, about, let's say, like, I don't know, ten years ago, twelve years ago, no one, the documents were not translated. Um, when she went to visit, I had to translate for her and everything, like, I'm really glad to see how this school has changed and developed so much. To be welcoming and accepting of everybody's religion, like, where they come from. I'm, it's great what Milford has done. I see so many people, they come now, and they're like, you have translators, yep. And then, like, when I got to high school, I didn't have someone to, like, make me tour, like, a lot of that.
Mm-hmm.
But they do that now, and like, even I was chosen to, like, tour someone, I think, one day. And I was like, this is the classes, and I told, I spoke to them in their own language, and I, I still talk to people that have just graduated, and I'm like, look, Milford's doing that, they're, they're changing, they're really becoming adaptive. They're the, um, population that they have, and I was really glad because I feel that I've had to gone, I, I feel like it was we have to go through something for it to change, and I feel like that's, I also fight for, like, team, like, being a team mom, and like, how it's really hard being that. And I feel like, I, I feel like now team moms here in Milford also have the opportunity, like, I've heard there's night school now. When I, when I had that, there was not night school, but it's okay, as long as other parents succeed, I love it. And I, I just want to see these great advancements, like I said. I was, I was here in kindergarten, and I've learned English, at least with, thankfully to Milford High, Milford Public Schools and everything. I've, my English is really well, like, I still, people say to me, um, you were born here in America. I was like, nope, I was not born in America, I was born in Ecuador. And they're like, you're, uh, you have no accent, and I'm like, it's thanks to me learning, um, English here. And I hadn't learned English until, like, fifth, fourth grade, and that was thanks to Ms. Hinnon, that I really thank her so much, and I'm really glad because she gave me my diploma, thank you, Mr. Ottlin.
That's awesome.
And it was, she really helped me a lot, and I really, Milford Public School has made a big impact on me, and I'm really blessed, saying thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to share your story with us, and we can't wait to welcome you back in a few years as part of the staff, so.
That'll be excellent. Any, uh, any questions for? Just quickly, thank you for being here, I know you have your, your son here, so we really appreciate it. And, you, you have said so much that I, to, to absorb, it's great, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, um, back to
Michael.
Michael, I'm also Michael.
Good night.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, thank you for coming. Just moving forward, um, this seems a great program, I'm supportive of it, um, and you thank me for coming.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think I just, all I, what I'd like to make, what I'm, I need, what we need people to understand is just, and we don't, I'm not asking.
Before we move on, I think we're going to let Daniella maybe, hello? Absolutely.
I'm going to thank very much everyone.
Thanks for coming.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Daniella, send me an email.
Thank you.
Let's get you in the mix before you graduate, all right?
I, I've done it, I've done summer success already, I'm a TA, looking to subbing next year.
We need subs.
Yeah. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Um, no, I, my, the point I want, the, 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 our stumbling block is we need somebody in the building. So we need to figure, and I recognize that, you know, we're out there trying to get grant money, but just so you're aware, that there's a need to have s- a, a teacher, a guidance counselor, um, someone in the building because there are X number of tasks that are really, yeah, that really can't be done by somebody who's not a Milford Public School employee. Um, and so that's the challenge, that's the challenge we're facing, and, you know, we, we've got a bunch of feelers out to get some grant money. You know, we're hoping we can do it, we're hoping, um, you know, we did not admit a class of ninth graders this year. We're hoping we can pick it up, we can pick them up as sophomores or as tenth graders early in the year, then follow up with a, our typical January, uh, enrollment. Um, and then, you know, let's see, see where it goes. Um, the, you know, we, we have thirty-some-odd mentors putting in, you know, working twenty weeks for an hour, you know, there's a lot of volunteer money being, you know, a lot of free money, but it would be a shame for it to go away just because we, we were missing this one last piece. Um, do people have other questions on the program? Is there anything that's like, ooh, I think I need to know more about that? Otherwise, I'm
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming, yeah, and thank you for presenting, and, uh.
This is, I, should I introduce Cindy? Does everybody know Cindy? Cindy's such an institution in the town. I just assumed that Cindy Stulak is on our advisory committee, um, and is here to offer support.
Thank you both for coming and presenting.
Is she also helping with the American Legion, Cindy?
I am.
She is.
My son's involved in the graphics piece, so thank you, he's really enjoying that.
No kidding?
Yeah, thanks, that's been really fun.
He's amazing.
Oh, thanks.
We've got our three, they, we put them on the air, I just sent them the clip.
They love that.
I said, tell all your parents, listen to you on the air the end of the night, Johnny Wilbur did a great job, and they're going to blast interviewing you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, on to the vending machine funds for MHS. So there's a request that we have in our packet, uh, from Dr. Ottlin related to use of vending machine funds. It's, it's, uh, three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and the different, um, different pieces that'll be used for are outlined. Anybody's had any questions, or we can just come right through it? All right?
A motion.
All right, motion by Michael to, um, accept Dr. Ottlin's request.
I'll second.
Second by Chris, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then we have, uh, up next, we have an out-of-state travel request for the twenty-twenty-five senior prom.
I move to accept.
I want to hear where they're going.
Oh. We can still discuss it.
All right.
All right, motion by Michael. Anybody want a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Chris, and now we can discuss it.
So the class two thousand and twenty-five would like to go to the Omni Providence. The class of twenty-four and twenty-three, uh, went to the Omni Providence as well. Uh, initially, I shared with the committee, uh, I had some reluctance about having students travel down to Providence, um, for a prom. We've had two great years down there, and, uh, the, the price is excellent. Um, and given the large percentage of Milford High School students that are facing economic hardship, affordability is key for us in the prom, and, uh, the Omni is able to offer us a high-quality venue at a price that's accessible to our students and families.
Very good. Good, a motion by Michael, second by Chris.
All in favor?
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. All right, let me catch up to where we are. All right, so that brings us to a chairperson update. So I have two So I have two things for everyone tonight. One was listed in the agenda, so the open meeting law complaint that was sent to us a few weeks ago has had some more, um, more traction, I guess, on that. So on June 13th, after our last meeting, Town Council Murray sent, sorry, this is June 10th. Town Council Murray sent a response that we voted on to the complaint conveying that we will not be taking any action to update the minutes. And the Attorney General's office was copied on that, as was their request based on their outline. On June 13th, they responded just noting that they can't officially address this or, or even decide if they're gonna take it up until the full 30-day window is complete. That's, I believe, Sunday, it might be the 23rd. And they did request in the meantime that we work to find a compromise if there was one available. And then on June 18th, which was a couple of days ago, the complaint had responded to Town Council's email with further information and I did send that along to everyone to review. So we, we have it on the agenda. If anyone has any comments, questions, or thoughts related to what we have there?
I know this is taking a while of your time. I feel at this point that you really should just refer it to Town Council.
Noted. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, obviously, we've had conversations because it started when I was chair. So you and I have gone back and forth on different conversations. You know, as the Attorney General did note, looking for a compromise, the, the individual that is looking for that information, I've also had conversations with that individual. I guess, you know, I understand what he's looking for, for information. You know, I felt like the minutes that we wrote were how we traditionally do it. So, yeah, I feel that if, if within those minutes, we need to add on an attachment to it that he's looking for, I feel like that, that document, which would be the, the review, is, it's, it's a piece of material that is open to the public, right? So I don't feel like we're, we're crossing any boundaries there. So I understand. And if, if that is the compromise that the Attorney General is looking for with this and just to say that within the executive session that we were referring to the, that particular document, so be it. So I guess that would be potentially a recommendation I would put on the table that, you know, is, is, if that's what the individual's looking for and the, the Attorney General is trying to allow us time to just come to a compromise, I would say, I would be in favor of something of that sort.
So I have an update on that piece, which I did not get a chance to put in this. I did talk to Attorney Murray today about that specific piece, noting that I, I went back and revisited Open Meeting Law and noted that it does say that a list of all documents referenced should be included in the minutes. He felt very strongly that the wording in the minutes is very clearly a reference towards a document. So he did not think that we needed to add any more note to the minutes. I will say, however, after you and I talked the last time, I did go back and check the meeting packet from the session when the review was given. And we did notice that that review document that we referenced was not part of the packet. So there was an unfortunate omission there that was not on purpose by any means, but it was, it was not there that's going to be put in that packet as it should be because it is a public document. And I think personally, I understand the complaint as well. I understand what he, what's being asked for in the sense of making the information readily available. But again, I have to talk to you, to Town Council Murray today. He, he felt that the document was very clearly called out and as long as access is given to that document, if requested, and also is put in the packet, that everything is, is in line in, in terms of how he feels about it.
Since this is now a legal issue, I really encourage all members not to talk to this person and defer to Town Council. And if Town Council makes a recommendation, I think we need to discuss that recommendation. But I think we need to be careful because this is the legal path and, you know, the legal path. So I really encourage, and we're spending a lot of time on this, so that's what Town Council is for, is to help us move, move forward. So whatever, I, I think at this point, if Town Council has a recommendation, then I think we discuss that.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, for that. I think, yeah, definitely, that is good advice. And as Matt has just stated, Town Council is, has offered more advice to that, so, or, or more direct involvement. So therefore, yeah, I agree.
Alright, so it seems like we'll just carry on with, with Town Council Murray's recommendations, which, which has already been provided, so I don't think there's anything we have to vote on or do tonight.
I just wanna add one thing, Matt, just for maybe historical context. I recall when I was here, we never added the email until the meeting happened. We shared it with everyone sort of simultaneously. So the reason it may not have been in the packet is because we didn't go back and add it. We probably just an omission, so just more of a process change that we can make sure we adhere to in the future, just for historical.
Thank you for that, Matt.
Excellent. Alright, so on to my second point, which is a community use board. So we're coming to that point where it's time to think about appointing the community use board. The policy not long ago was written that had us appointing seven members in three separate groups and that will be happening by September 30th, of, of September 30th of this year. And the goal was that we would be appointing two members that would have a one-year term, two members with a two-year term, and three members with a three-year term. And then once we do that initial appointment, we're going to cycle through them. As their terms expire, they'll each get three-year terms. So what I will ask in terms of public participation is I'm, I'm looking for some, some more applicants. If we get a couple, two, three, four more, we may have up to two seats to fill on top of some of the folks that we already have in there now. So I will obviously ask if we can put the feelers out on that one in terms of reaching out.
You can send that as an email to lots of families.
Yep. Reaching out to, to me with, with their desire to serve.
And staff, too.
Absolutely, yeah. And then I hope by the end of the summer, we can have enough people that we can make this decision. And the only other thing I would ask with this one, given a conflict of one of the board members, is that you're the one who makes the appointments rather than the chair who is called out on the calls.
Okay.
So, other than that, that's all I have on that piece.
And, excuse me, Mr. When those appointments need to be, September?
We wrote September 30th of every year, so we have some time. I assume we may need a couple of months to gather applicants for it based on the past, so. We'll talk about it until we get enough people. Alright. That brings us to, do that already, capital plan. So our last meeting, we discussed adjusting the capital plan and then that was taken to FinCom's capital subcommittee. They were in favor of what we had outlined. They were obviously happy to hear that we were able to remove things like 90,000 for flat screens and such. They had one recommendation, and I'll, I'll lay it out there now and we can either decide to further update the plan before we vote on it or we can just keep it the way it is. The one question that they were discussing, as I pull it up here, is next year, October 2025, we have five vans listed as coming up to be replaced all at the same time. So the hope was we could decide which ones we could push out. So maybe we do two next year, then we can push two to October 2026. I think we probably need more input from Transportation and from Miss Perry to find out which ones we can stagger.
We've historically been able to do that, though. You know, where we've shifted. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make an adjustment yet.
Okay.
But what I would do is, I think, get that update from Jim. And usually what he's, what he's able to do is move, you know, one, two, or three for an additional year. And we do try to maximize the use of every vehicle.
Okay, and, and that was what I shared with, with Al and the rest of FinCom, was that we would figure out which ones need to be at the most and we can try to stretch this out so that we're not replacing four or five cars at once.
And I would say it's unlikely we'd replace all five. It's probably, there's probably two or three we can probably bump to 26.
Okay. And then the only other update I had on this that I wanted to share, Miss Perry mentioned the Woodland litigation ruling and the $600,000 that was awarded as part of that, nobody quite knew.
So I can actually give you the background unless you have it.
I don't have the, I don't have the background. If you want to show the background, then I'll let you know the answer I got from Town Hall.
Yeah, so, let's see if it's consistent. Yeah, so this was, it was based on some drainage issues, I believe, at Woodland Elementary School and the judgment went our way. And one of the things that we didn't put as part of the project was a cold storage facility. And basically what a cold storage facility is, it just doesn't have heat or running water. It's just to store equipment. And we store the equipment right now at a place that I wouldn't consider to be optimal and to add this for the maintenance department to be able to put, you know, storage, you know, store some of our like winter equipment, some of our, our other larger equipment. Would be hugely beneficial and was one of the kind of, I don't wanna call it the will of the building committee, but it was one of the things that they wanted to do if the litigation kinda went our way. It was basically the gist of, the kind of the last wish of the, the Woodland School Building Committee or one of the last wishes.
Okay, and that's good. That's what I heard too. So.
Alright, good.
The, the part that was, the part that was up for debate until Zach Taylor at Town Hall chimed in was, who owns that money right now? And the short answer is not us, but kinda us. And what I mean by that is, the money was originally put back into the project, according to, to Mr. Taylor, which would have allowed the, the capital project to reuse it for restitution based on the problem. But because that wasn't done, that money right now is basically out there for use by the town in any way that Town Meeting votes to spend it. Meaning, according to Zach, that in his notes and in his mind, that is school capital plan funds, but it has to go in front of Town Meeting and they have to approve what we're talking about. So we can't just put out a, a bid for a cold storage building. We would have to make a case for it with Town Meeting and ask them to use the $600,000 for that. So it's there and it's somewhat being held aside for us, but how long? Who knows? So that's where that stands.
Does the Woodland School Building Committee still have any involvement in how that money's spent? Or is it, do you know?
No, he.
I think we closed that committee.
Yeah. They are, they know as many questions as if they do exist. Chose not to pursue the option of what he called restitution with allowable use without further appropriation, so.
And now those monies, are they only allocated for the Woodland, for Woodland and its surrounding?
No, technically.
No, okay.
Yeah, because it wasn't a, it wasn't a bonding process either. He said, they are not limited. They can be used for anything the town is legally allowed to spend money on. Including outside of education, technically. But he's, he's suggesting to FinCom that they're saved for a capital project related to education. So that's the update on that. So.
So it's not a $600,000 cold storage?
No, yeah, we can't just go out to bid for that. It's gonna have to be something that perhaps.
And I couldn't tell you what its cold storage values would cost either. If that's a high estimate or a low estimate.
Alright, so let's go back to the capital plan and I'll entertain a motion to accept the capital plan as written.
Second.
Motion by Michael.
Second by Brendan.
Just a point of discussion, Matt. Do we wanna add the cold storage as an item so that it's flashed on our plans, so that it moves forward?
I personally think we need to have a little more discussion around.
And know how much it costs.
If I'm looking at the capital plan, I see 500 something thousand dollars for a science lab at the high school. I mean, at Stacy, I'd rather jump on that before this money gets spent somewhere else than try to find out a building. But we can talk about that further or perhaps budget. Subcommittee can take that as a, something to think about too.
Yep.
Great.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Still have meeting minutes.
Yeah, why don't we jump back to those right now? Thank you, Brendan. So we already talked about the meeting minutes from the June 6 regular session. Brendan was not here, so Megan, do you have any thoughts on those minutes?
Nope, I'm good with those.
Alright, motion to accept the June 6 regular session minutes. Motion by Chris.
So moved.
Second by Megan. All in favor? And that is four in favor and Brendan abstains. And then we have the minutes from the June 6, 6th executive session. These are approval but not release. Any comments? Though I would say the one thing that I would add to that is if we can make all of the votes listed as roll call versus.
You sent that to Melissa already, correct?
Yes.
Yep, so she'll make those changes.
I don't know if she got to that or not. Okay.
But you will.
Okay, cool.
Yep.
Any other thing on those minutes? Nothing?
So Melissa's making those?
She's gonna make the, adjust, that one adjustment.
Okay.